To the county council meeting of Monday, January 9th, which has two significance. It is our first meeting of county council for the new year, and it is our first meeting of the newly elected county council. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Bartholomew.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Brown.
Here. Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Dawson.
Here.
Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Tavernick.
Present.
Councilmember McGowan. Chairman Passamit.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then please remain standing for the invocation? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lord, you are known by many names and beyond all names, spirit of life, spirit of love, spirit of community, spirit of justice. We ask your blessings on the people seated here who have been called to lead the county in which we live, work, and play. Help us as leaders to ask, how do we solve this problem? What do we need to learn? How might we need to change and to whom do we need to listen? Remind us, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that we are not only leaders but also servants. That is our responsibility to serve the common good of all. Remind us, no matter where we live, everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in mind, body, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. May we always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. Finally, this we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. Amen.
Amen.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of council to please make a motion and second to approve tonight's council agenda.
I make a motion.
Ms. Brown makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Cunningham made the second.
All right.
Duly motioned and seconded. Any questions, concerns, discussion? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved unanimously without any objections. Next, we turn to our administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, council members of the citizens of Beaufort County who are in attendance and also watching us either online or through the county channel. As is customary for me to do, I introduce employees, and I'm going to continue with that again after taking some time off over the last couple of months because of the holiday season and all of that. But first tonight, I'm going to bring up Joshua Sudomerski from our auditor's office. Joshua is the assistant deputy auditor who has been with us for four years. Basically, his job duties are to assist the auditor and the deputy auditor in all areas related to the operations of the auditor's office, including but not limited to operational staff supervision, planning and participating in training, legal research, and resolving problems and issues relating to the daily issues that may arise. Joshua has said it's proven time and time again that he is self-motivated, focused, and disciplined in his work. He never finds excuses for nonperformance, but instead he is proactive and ensures that he has the tools to perform his job efficiently and effectively. He has never been out from work and is usually the first person in and the last person to leave the office, and I can attest to that because I usually get here pretty early, and either Joshua is going into the building before me or just after me in the morning. So he is a very dedicated employee, and I'm sure the auditor office's elected official is very pleased to have him. When he's not working, Joshua helps manage a website that catalogs interviews, reviews, and keeps other information for various distributed movies, and he runs a game-related channel on YouTube. So you're into that gaming too, huh? That seems to be, that seems to be the thing. So let's, what I'm going to do is I'm going to let you say a few words if you want to. You don't have to, and we're going to give you a round of applause, and I think somebody's probably going to take our picture here. Okay, so a few words if you want.
Thank you, sir. I try to do my best, continue doing what I'm doing, and about it. Just happy to do what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next employee is not with us this evening. You all may have talked to this individual. Her name is Stella Johnson-Lawyer. She works at our information technology and communications division. She's an administrative assistant, and basically her job is if you call the main line of the county, you're going to talk to Ms. Stella. Even if you call, if you come into this building and try to call into an office. I have a picture of her. Only in Beaufort County would we basically be in Beaufort, transfer you to Hilton Head to be able to call another office back in Beaufort. So that's, that's the way it's set up. Stella is in our Hilton Head office. She's been with us for 20 years. Of course, she does, does all the administrative duties and answering the switchboard for countywide incoming calls, so she has a wealth of knowledge and a lot of experience with us. She loves to dance, she loves to help people, and she loves her church. So let's give Stella a round of applause. And I had, I had a third employee, but due to a sickness, they could not be with us this evening, so we will be doing that next time around, and, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We are now at the citizen comments. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a comment at this time?
No, there's no.
All right, then we will move on to the liaison and committee reports. Mr. Glover, I understand you wanted to let people know about a meeting?
Yes, I do have, and I want to announce that I have a community meeting this coming Wednesday at 5:30 at the St. Helena Library on St. Helena, and the purpose of that meeting, first of all, would be Ebony Sanders, the assessor, will be there to talk about reassessment that's coming up. So that's the first part of the meeting. The remaining of the meeting, I will take any comments or questions or concern that the community may have at this time. And the reason I'm doing this, and I thank you, Mr. Chairman, I sent out a notice recently, and I had everything on there but the date and time. So it's on Wednesday at the library, 5:30, until they close or until they kick us out. Thank you.
Ms. Howard, did you wish to make some comments about your committee?
Yes, sir. We had a very productive meeting, first meeting of the Community Services and Land Use Committee. We had, we passed on some recommendations for the green space program, which we hope will be brought up tonight, so we can be on schedule for that. And we also postponed the proposed tax amendment for the Cultural Resource Overlay District on St. Helena and asked that committee, the cultural, St. Helena Cultural Resource Oversight Committee, to work with our attorneys to see if there are some changes or not to be made to that.
Thank you. Is, yes, sir, Mr. Lawson.
Finance Committee, we have our first meeting next Tuesday. It's after the holidays, so not on Monday but on Tuesday. And then the All Joy Road sidewalk public meeting is tomorrow, which will reveal the engineering that's been done for the pathway along All Joy Road. That's from 5:00 to 7:00. Come out and see what has been designed and what has been shown to the public.
Okay, thank you. Any other, all right, we will now move on to the action items. Item number eight is the approval of the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. I would need a motion and second for those items.
Go move, Chairman.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Tavernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without any objections, and I see no objections. Next item on the list is item number nine, establishment of hawkers and peddlers licenses for, license fees for 2023. May I have a motion for that, please?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion, a second.
I'll second. I'll second.
Ms. Brown makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Seeing none, the item number nine will be approved without objection, and there are no objections. Item number 10 is a presentation and public hearing for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, known as the CBDG, and Michelle Knight from the Low Country Council of Governments will make that presentation. Good evening.
Chairman Passamit, I need to ask that you move my item down the agenda if possible because we publicize that public hearing for 6 o'clock. We have to per the county's community or citizens' participation plan and per HUD requirements, so it is only 10 minutes after 5:00. It's not close to 6:00.
We can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. It might be the last item on the agenda because...
That's fine. I'll try not to be between y'all and the national championship.
Okay. Item number 11 is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a county-owned real property located at 108 Cedar Waterway to the SCDOT for a dedicated right-turn lane on Grover Hill Road. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I think that's your district, well, that was your district, but I'll second from that one.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, and is there any questions about this that Jared, who is eagerly awaiting to talk, may need to give us? If there aren't any, we will just move on, and there are no questions, this item will be adopted without objection. Next item, number 12, is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents to provide funding for the purchase of real property identified as 2 Mullet Street and enter into a six-month lease agreement for a portion of the real property. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Any discussion about this? For our newly elected members, do you know where this property is and what this is about? You may have read it in your packet, but if we need to explain it so that you fully understand that, we'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, please do that.
Yes, okay. Who from administration would like to take that up? Jared. I knew you wanted to talk.
I figured it out. If it wasn't the last one, it'd be this one, so. And Brittany's online too, so if I mess anything up, and I have a exhibit, I think, Sarah, you can bring it up. So this is a piece of property right next to our existing All Joy Boat Landing. So this is our existing boat landing. We have limited parking at this. If you've ever been there, it's a very busy boat landing, and the parcel, as is presented in the package, is, is two parts. Right there to the north of this, north of the red line, and to the right, you can kind of see the wooded areas. That's part of the parcel, and then above this, off the screen, is a section, second section of the parcel, which is a house that's located. So the entire parcel is the, is, is both the wooded section and the northern section just off the screen. This came about, Councilman Lawson brought this to staff's attention to do some reconnaissance. There was a offer that, we, we talked about this at public facilities in December, I believe, and we've negotiated that with the landowner. The, the, the price that they had it listed for was $1,950,000. We did an appraisal since then, and it came back as the value is $1,930,000, so we've negotiated that fee with the landowner. This will provide, as you see here, we have seven car spaces and 12 trailer spaces existing, and if you slide down, this will provide us a little bit more space. It's not a lot, but anytime there's an opportunity to expand our, our boat landings, it's always great. So it'll give us 11 spaces and 19 trailer spaces. Also, what's included with the purchase, you can see a dock there, and that dock is, goes down in deep water, so that will be something that we can utilize that's not currently part of the existing boat ramp, and we'll be able to use that for fishing or mooring as you offload your boats and such. So that is an overall description, and we're glad to take any questions. And then one more, if you scroll down one more, this is just some of our preliminary drawing where we got some of those spaces from. Also, some proposed stormwater control there on the, on the portion that borders the water.
Mr. Lawson.
Let me just add that this is in my district, bordering Paulus District, and Bluffton has, has a limited number of boat landings. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to, would, would love to have it be more property, but at least to expand. And I think the biggest thing is the fact that there is an additional dock, as, as Mr. Perlich had mentioned, that would allow for fishing or for pickup and drop-off for, for pleasure boats, which that actually ties the landing up quite a bit down there by having another spot they can pull up. So again, it, it, we're paying top dollar. There's no doubt about that. It's what it's praised for, but again, in the long run, this is an absolute deal. It's a steal for us to be able to do this, and again, a once-in-a-lifetime chance for us to expand that area down there and offer more. And again, once we purchase it, we can then see what the best thing is for that piece of property. It might be to keep it all, it might be to turn around and do something else. So again, I'd recommend and ask that we do move this forward.
Any questions, other questions? Mr. Glover.
Thank you. Jared, let me show you this thing. We're looking at parcel A and parcel B?
Yeah, do you have the backup documentation? Yeah, so it is parcel A and B, so there's two parts to parcel B, or parcel A that total .41 acres, and then there's two parts to parcel B that total .34. So all in all, the entire property under, there's two tax match parcel numbers, entirety is .75 acres. Parcel, parcel B is the section up north that has the house on.
And our plans for, did you say that, houses?
Right. We told, our term leases to elderly couple that owns it, and they have intentions to move out once the purchase, if it gets approved, the purchase goes through, and they said they could be out in three months, but we put six months in there just to give them ample time, and then at that point, council can decide if that's something they'd like to carve off and sell that back to market or do something else with the, the house property.
Okay, if I'm looking at the, the survey line, is, is parcel B a portion of the house?
Yeah, so go down to the next exhibit, Sarah. So this is parcel B. So there are two tax map numbers, so parcel B is what's in bold right there.
Right.
So it includes the house.
Oh, okay.
And then parcel A is the part that surrounds our existing land.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. We have it duly motioned and seconded. This, it has been duly motioned and seconded. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next item is item number 13, approval of a resolution to adopt planning and zoning fee schedule changes to help offset the cost of services provided by the department and to assist in providing the necessary resources to continue serving the Beaufort County resident and business community. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Ms. Tavernick makes the motion, and Ms. Howard makes the second. It has duly been motioned and seconded. Is there any need for administration to go over the materials that were in the packet?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yes, please.
I really appreciated administration giving us the other counties, Dorchester County, Charleston County, and Bluffton itself, because it helped put it in perspective for me. I was a little surprised we haven't revised it since 1999, but okay, better late than never. But I do appreciate the due diligence in showing us the other areas, so we can kind of put it in perspective, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Bartholomew.
Is exhibit A the only fee schedule that's been presented? Or there are alternatives that we can vote on?
No, that, that was the proposed fee schedule. Do you have any questions about the fees?
No, I just think some of them are relatively high in comparison to some of the other counties. I understand that amendments, they need to be updated, but I do think some of them are relatively high, and I'd be voting no, as is.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Tavernick made the motion, and Ms. Howard made the second.
Yes, sir, I have it. Councilmember Tavernick.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard.
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew.
No.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson.
Yes.
Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Lawson.
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Reed. Vice Chairman McGowan.
Yes.
Chairman Passamit.
Yes.
The motion passes 10-1.
Thank you. Item number 14 is approval of a resolution updating Beaufort County's prioritized five-year dirt road paving program. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Cunningham makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Is there anyone who needs information regarding the five-year dirt paving, paving program from our administration? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item 15 is approval of a resolution to accept the South Carolina Aeronautics Commission, known as the SCAC, grant for the design and bidding of a project to rehabilitate the Beaufort Executive Airport ARW runway. May I have a motion for that item?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Can I have a presentation on this?
Um, is there anybody from the, oh, there is John hiding on us. And you thought you were just going to squeak in and out? Yes, okay.
Good evening. Welcome, new councilmembers. John Rubble, the Air Force Director. This one's pretty routine. What this is, is just a grant that South Carolina Aeronautics Commission is offering to the county for the design and bidding of a project out of the airport. What we're doing is rehabbing the runway out there. Runway's in good shape, but it is aging. And in order to keep up with our FAA grant obligations, since we do take federal money for projects, we do have to make sure that that runway stays in, in a certain quality of repair, so to speak. So this grant will be coupled with an FAA grant and then with airport funds to complete the design and bidding, and then in about, probably about a year and a half to two years, it'll move to construction.
Okay. Questions for?
Where are we with hangers right now? That part of this proposal is just mainly on the runway and stuff?
This is strictly a grant related to the runway.
The runway?
Yes, sir.
But you can answer the question?
With the hangers? We do have a project that, that we're working on within the county, using some of the ARPA funds for hangar development out there. So we've got a concept design that we're working on with the county department and moving that forward. So we're very excited to, not ready to roll it out yet, but we're excited to do that. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I do have one, John.
Yes, sir.
When you're talking about the rehabilitation of the runway, is that a mill and repave overlay, combination thereof?
That's a good question. This rehabilitation will be a full mill and, and then replacement of that runway.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
What kind of timeline are we looking at for completion? Right now, the FAA's got a new program where after we design and bid the project, that actually may have a delay between design and bidding. The FAA kind of calls a timeout in between now. It used to be that you could roll right from design and bidding into construction. They want a little bit of extra time to review the project and make sure that everything meets their, their standards. I think part of that is probably workload at the, at the federal level. So when we would normally roll straight to construction, we'll now have somewhere between a nine and 12-month break between design and construction. So we'll have it designed during this calendar year, but it won't be under construction probably until public calendar year 25.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman, if I would.
Yes.
How, how do you, when you do the runway itself, what's, what's your plan? Are you going to close the runway until it's completed? And how long will it take? Or would the smaller runway be available for some, some of the planes?
It's a great question, because we only have a single runway. That will be something that we'll develop a, a safety and phasing plan with the engineers, and they'll propose that to the FAA. And then the contractors will incorporate that plan into their phasing of the construction. So they'll basically be telling us how they think it will work, and the FAA will have to approve it. But it'll be some type of phasing plan, and we'll see how that works.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good questions. Any other comments? Okay. The item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Item number 16, approval of a resolution to amend Resolution 2022/50, authorizing the county administrator to enter into an agreement with the Community Works for providing administration and management support for a designated regional housing trust fund.
I'd like to make a motion to go forward with this.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernak makes the second. Is there any need for discussion about this?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I was attending the Soloco meetings when Eric was trying to flush this all out with the other governmental agencies. So it's a lot of work, and it's finally done, and eight agencies together. I think it's a great, we all talked about it, affordable housing. So this trust is a great way to start it. And when I was reading the documentation with the Community Works, I do like that we're requiring annual evaluation with specific benchmarks in there, specific items that they have to respond to. So I, there's a good element of accountability here.
There is. Any other comments? Seeing none, this item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 17, now this may take a little bit of time, because this did come out of our prior meeting. So it is a time-sensitive item originating from the January 9th Community Services and Land Use Committee. We're asking a member of council to make a motion and second for the approval of the Beaufort County Green Space Advisory Committee application process, geographic designations, and timeline for appointing the Green Space Advisory Committee and establishing the Green Space Program. A motion, Ms.?
I'll make a motion that we go.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Reed makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, Ms. Howard, I'm going to let you open up some discussions so that the audience members and the members who are online, who were not attending that meeting, will know exactly what took place and why it's time-sensitive.
At the meeting, we, we discussed the application with, we're going to add a few things to it, to include criteria in more detail. The committee recommended map B, which is included in the packet, for, because we have to divide the county into four quadrants. And we also talked about the timeline. The first, we'll have two ordinances. The first one will come April 10th, hopefully. That will be a mini ordinance, which will establish the application process, and then we'll have another ordinance later on April 24th. Right. And can I leave anything out, Mr. Glover, or any of the committee members?
Yeah, I think the, the second ordinance would deal with problematic concerns, if I'm not mistaken. The first ordinance would basically get the timeline in, the, the application process. Also, the calendar is in there as well. And we, I thought we suggested if the staff could add a little more to the northern region from the west area to kind of balance that out a little, about 10,000 residents. That would make it a perfect, to me, a perfect, and it also will establish us going across the Broad River, you know, so we don't have that divide all the time with the Broad River. So that would be great to have, if it's not too problematic. But that's all I can think of at this time, Mr. Chairman.
The timeline may look ambitious, but it is not really. We want to be able to, when we start receiving those funds, starting in August, September timeframe, we want to be ready to do it and have the committee up and working.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, we also made a couple of recommendations on the application.
Yes, we did.
And I think they were approved in our motion.
Yes. And those of you who are either in the audience, or especially those of you who are online, the application process is going to be set up, and you can actually do it online, which is a benefit. We're looking for the best of the best. And therefore, it does not preclude anyone who currently sits on a board or commission from applying for this particular green space program. That should be duly noted. Any other comments?
The at-large positions, both, the legislative designee or the at-large candidate could be out of the county.
That's correct.
So those are, yeah, some notations, yeah.
Okay.
When will the public be, when will the application be ready for the public to go online and apply?
As soon as we approve this, within a week, they hope to have everything set up and ready to go. January 17th is the target date. That's why this was time-sensitive for us to, in fact, take this up this evening so that we meet all the timelines and deadlines we have to meet to have this approved by April 24th. Any other questions? Seeing none? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bartholomew.
The map B?
Yes.
Voting yes on this, is that going to allow them to?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Balance out the population, yes.
So I, I understand the argument to balance out the population, totally for it. And just to point on Mr. Glover's statement with it, I have no problem doing that if you want to balance it out and come over, you know, across the Broad River. I'm just trying to figure out if that's something personally that you genuinely want, if you want. Is it possible you could get two people from the Bluffton side, then, representing your districts as well as the west? By getting that population? I have no problem with it, but I'm just saying, there is an opportunity for you to lose that based on the candidate that can come in. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page, that that is in the realm of possibilities.
The way I, the way I saw it earlier was that the, on the, on the east, we probably have three candidates or council members that will probably get together and select somebody. And on the north side, it's basically two, two council members, chairman and Mr. Dawson. And then I just figured, on the south side, y'all, y'all work that thing out. You know, but you can probably have two candidates having, I mean, one, one council member in both areas. But I would hope that they would yield to somebody else, because they were selecting from another district, you know? Yeah, you got seven of us, we got three, 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 and then you're going to have two. And that, where that two lies and stuff, or that third one lies and stuff, is really south of the Broad, if you take that scenario the more we forward.
Yeah, I just didn't want you to, like, give up your power of choosing by moving that across the river that way, if it does go into another district, that's all.
It's not his power of choosing, because the entire council is the one that will be appointing this committee.
Correct.
And hopefully, the thing he said before about getting rid of the concept of north of the Broad?
Yes.
And south of the Broad, this Green Space Committee is going to take a look at our entire county and be cognizant of what is needed in the best interest of the county.
Right.
But your point is?
Which is my goal, that's why I support it. I'm just making sure we understand the ramifications or the decisions of making that balance out, that it is possible that you have, that one from that north district is actually on the other side, and that's fine with me, I'm just making sure we were all clear on that. Okay, cool.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm with you on that, yes.
Okay. Any final comments? This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, we're now back to item number 10. I've stalled it long enough, so you're going to have to talk slowly.
And I try to ask enough questions.
I'm not going to talk slow, because I'm not going to believe it. But I am going to try to get through it. Y'all may have to bear with me a little bit, because literally, the program statement for this year came out at lunchtime today. This is a newly set up PowerPoint with the new numbers in it, so we'll just have to get through it. But by way of introduction, for those of y'all who don't know me, I'm Michelle Knight, I'm with Low Country Council of Governments. We are a regional planning council for the core county area, and we do a lot of grant administration work through our, through my department, community and economic development, primarily with community development block grants, with the Economic Development Administration, and rural development, and then some smaller programs through PRT, FEMA, that sort of thing. What we're here tonight for is to do the annual needs assessment public hearing for the county, to go through the state CDBG program, to be able to get the county into a position so that if they choose over the next 12 months to pursue a grant project through South Carolina Department of Commerce, that they'll be able to do that. The goal is to have your public hearing tonight, and I think typically Beaufort County goes and takes there the findings of the public hearing, if there are any comments to committee, and you come back at your next meeting, or maybe your February meeting, and actually rank the projects after it goes through committee. So tonight, my goal is to talk about the program, tell you about the program, answer any questions you have about the program. And obviously, if committee time comes and you need us at, at committee, we'll do that as well. So the first thing that I'm going to do is do our annual advertisement, too, about fair housing. If anyone on staff or any council member talks to someone in the community, and they tell you that they feel like they've been discriminated against due to one of the protected classes, either in the provision of housing, see, uh-oh. Let me see if I can get back to that. And the provision of housing and real estate or brokerage transactions or brokerage services, that they can contact us at Low Country Council of Governments. We will take the information on their potential complaint and forward it to the appropriate groups as need be. Then for 2023, obviously, the community development block grant program serves basically one of three national objectives. We either address a majority of low to moderate income people, we address slum and blight situations in the county, or we address an urgent need. As of June of 2022, low to moderate income in Beaufort County, based on a family of four, is basically anyone who's, or any family whose annual income is less than $69,350 a year. That's based on the newest HUD data that we have. So anyone, 51% of the people that we serve on a project would have to fall below that number if they were a family of four. The number goes up or down based on the number of people in your household. For this year, we are expecting to receive approximately $19.7 million through the state for that money. All the details that I'm going to talk to you about tonight are in the 2023 Draft Action Plan. This plan is available online at www.cdbg.com, under the program documents, it's been uploaded. You can also get that from us. We'll load that onto our website probably in the next day or two. Or if you email me or contact me at the COG, I'll be glad to forward you a copy of a, a digital copy of the full plan. Any comments about the plan? If you read the whole document and have questions or comments or things that you think should be changed? Any comments on the plan have to be received by February 7th of this year, and those are sent to Lisa Ross at South Carolina Department of Commerce. And her email address is on this slideshow, but it's also in that document as well. There are basically three broad grant, program categories that this $19.7 million is divided among, and that is community development, business development, and regional planning. And then we're going to, oops, get into the meat of things. Those programs are broken down in more detail here, or community development. For community development, there are basically four set-asides that are under that program. There's community infrastructure, which is our spring round of CDBG funding. This is typically your water, sewer, drainage, roads, set aside. There's ten point nine million dollars available. There's an application request deadline of March seventeenth and an application full deadline of April seventeenth of this year. The maximum funding amount for this program is one million dollars. Although, under certain circumstances, we can request a waiver of that to go beyond one million. The community enrichment program is our fall CDBG round that's the larger of the three set-asides. We have an August fifteenth deadline for requests there. And we have a September fifteenth deadline for full applications there. This program basically wants you to address three broad-based state priorities. Either addressing economic competitiveness, addressing education and workforce development issues, or addressing safe and healthy community issues. On this slide, there are some examples of things that can be done. Demolition projects for basically white elephant buildings that are owned by a public entity. Downtown streetscape improvements where you're addressing, or you have a large amount of match where you can match dollar for dollar the improvement that you're doing. Libraries, y'all have done a library project, the St. Helena Library is a result of in part CDBG funding. Publicly owned facilities that are addressing a low to moderate income clientele. So this could be senior centers. It could be at-risk youth programs, that kind of thing, where you have a publicly owned facility that's offering some educational opportunities. Health clinics in low to moderate income areas. And we also do even in this, some equipment, we can do fire trucks and EMS vehicles as well if they serve a low to moderate income area primarily. The maximum funding in this program is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. With downtown streetscape improvements, I believe that that can go up a little bit above that under certain conditions as well. The third set aside on this page that we're gonna talk about is what used to be special projects. Now it's called local priorities. It still has the same fall request and full application deadlines of mid-August and mid-September. And basically, the primary things that we're looking for there are projects that address economic development concerns, public health and safety and quality of life concerns. And then the new buzzword throughout this program statement is addressing resiliency and narrowing the digital divide. No one has exactly explained to us yet how they envision that. But what the discussion has been internally with staff and with some of our counterparts is looking at projects that could potentially address broadband in rural areas in some way, shape, or form to bring those, those areas into the twenty-first century. Then our other set-asides that we have are neighborhood revitalization. Again, this is a fall round competitive set aside. This is where we look at a neighborhood that is close to a commercial center. We have basically a mini comprehensive planning effort that's done either through studies that you already have, if they're available, or we go out and we do that. And we try to address multiple activities within a neighborhood. So we may be doing water or sewer or drainage. We may be doing sidewalks, we may be doing cameras, we may be demolishing attractive nuisance properties. We may be doing exterior work on houses, but we cannot go inside the house. And we have to have volunteer help with that as well. We may address some public service activities, but that can only be a small portion of the grant. The maximum funding for this now is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is an increase from what we've seen in years past, mainly because of the fact that a lot of these projects that we've done in the past will have a water or sewer component that is extremely expensive, which minimizes what we can do as far as additional activities. So they've allowed us to increase that to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The final set aside here is ready to go. This is a non-competitive program where you can apply for up to five hundred thousand dollars, but they do allow for waivers. And you can apply for anything that you could potentially do in community infrastructure or in community enrichment. The key here is that within sixty days of a grant award, that you were shovel-ready to bid a project. So you have to have all your due diligence done, your environmental reviews. If you need to acquire property, you need to go on and get that done. Any of those things, basically, but for the check, when you apply, you could start this project. There is no deadline for us to apply. Basically, we put a request in and you have thirty days to get an application in. And that's all there is to that. Again, there's a reminder here of what our national objectives are on this page. And then our final two larger programs are broader addressing programs. Our economic, our business development program where there's two million dollars that's set aside for this. This is to basically provide public infrastructure to companies that are locating in or expanding in the county. Your company owners have to provide job creation commitments and monetary commitments as to what they're doing by way of expansion. They have to provide a performance or sign a performance agreement if we get funding for this money or for this, these projects. And typically, those projects range in the neighborhood of five to six hundred thousand dollars. It's all kind of determined on the number of jobs that are created as to the amount of money that you can receive under that program. Those jobs that they're committing have to be jobs that are considered LMI qualifying jobs, which basically means you can do it with a high school education and less than a year's experience. So these are not necessarily your highest high-end jobs. That's not to say that some of the jobs created couldn't be that, but fifty-one percent have to go to people who can do it after they graduate from high school, basically, with on-the-job training. And then there's no deadline on this program either. It's the same kind of setup that you have with the ready-to-go set aside. You put in an application request, you have thirty days to get the application in. Typically, these projects come out of your economic development arm. So any of your work with Southern Carolina Alliance potentially could result in some of these projects. Or it could be a commerce-driven project through the state as well. The remaining money in that nineteen point seven million dollars goes to regional planning and to state technical assistance and administration. The regional planning program, that is five hundred thousand dollars that is split among the ten planning councils, of which Low Country Council of Governments is one, which allows us to be able to come out and do these public hearings to meet with your staff when you have projects that you want to develop and for us to arrange for meetings with Commerce to do the same. Also, since most of this money is competitive, there are extra competitive points under the competitive program if your projects are located in an opportunity zone. There are also performance thresholds. I think right now Beaufort County has two projects that technically, as of the grant deadline, will be under a thirty-month grant period. So theoretically, you could do something in spring. But if you don't do anything in spring and your oldest project doesn't close by fall, then you won't be doing anything after that unless it's an economic development project. Other performance threshold requirements, you can only have one neighborhood project, of which the county has none. You can only have one ready-to-go project, of which the county has none. And you can do no more than one project in the same neighborhood. And right now, your two projects, I think, are at Stewart Point Road and then Detour Road. And technically, they're not the same neighborhood as far as the state's concerned, even though they're both in northern Beaufort County. The last three slides here, because I'm not gonna go over a whole lot, are just a rundown of the Low Country Regional Housing Consortium, which Low Country Council of Governments manages. We have all four counties and all of our municipalities now participate in that home program. Primarily, we are addressing three objectives there. We look at substandard housing rehabilitation. We look at increasing accessibility to adequate and affordable housing. And we look at supporting development and the availability of safe, decent, and affordable housing. We have an annual action plan, just like the state has an annual action plan, that we have to address in April as far as submitting that to HUD. In the meantime, while you're prioritizing your needs for CDBG, if you have any comments or any things that you think should be a priority as far as the home program's concerned, then I would like y'all to make us aware of that too. But that's kind of a separate thing from ranking your priorities for CDBG. Because as you can tell from what I've said, the community development block grant program is not doing very much by way of housing. They're doing things that will support housing theoretically, but they're not doing a lot of traditional affordable housing work. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions of Michelle before we go to the public hearing portion of it. And by the way, Sarah, will this be able to be sent to all county members? Thank you very much.
Just one question, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Glover.
Ms. McNight, thank you for your presentation, always. The area of resiliency is is, you know, rise, could be a part of that?
I would think so, but it's probably something that we would need to talk to Commerce staff about. And having said that, too, the other thing that I didn't mention, and staff always gets a notice about this too. But we do plan to have a project development meeting of some sort, whether it's held at the COG or whether we can get someone's time for more than a day where we can come out maybe for half a day to Beaufort County, half a day to Collin, and then half a day to Jasper and half a day to Hampton, like that. We do plan to do that, so, but that probably is something that could be discussed.
Ms. Howard.
Do the ten points for opportunity zones, is that across the board for any project?
That is for any project in the state that actually is either located in the opportunity zone. Or I think if you can make the argument that will benefit, maybe it's not in the opportunity zone, but it could benefit someone or groups that are in the opportunity zones, that you can get that. We basically now with all of our applications have to provide a map to show where our project is in relation to an opportunity zone. So if it's in it, it definitely gets it. If it's near it and we can make the argument, sometimes it gets it.
Any other comments? All right, is there any member in the audience who wishes to make a comment about what was said? Please come forward, state your name, and let's hear your comment.
Yeah, my name is Joyce. My comment in reference to community block grant, am I correct? How are we looking forward to ensuring that the people that are living in these areas are getting jobs from these government fundings that you are bringing services? Because over the time, it just seems like you guys are constantly providing services, but the people who need the job aren't getting these jobs. You're, you're, you're recruiting people to these areas and you are inviting people to come work in our areas from, from Hampton and from... I'm not saying that these people don't deserve to work. We all deserve to work. But at the same time, we're trying to keep our properties too. And you guys are charging us for water, for all these taxes you're placing on us. And when we don't get jobs, it's difficult for us to pay taxes. You understand? On our own property. You see? And so it's unfair to us that you're constantly putting this hardship on us and failing to give us employment. And I don't know, I mean, I guess I got three minutes, so it's okay to watch your watch. But it's important that we get jobs and we're able to work in our own homeland because we are the indigenous people here in this land.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Does anyone online have a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion. I now need a motion and second for the approval of the twenty-twenty-three block grant.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion, Mr. Dawson makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. We're now at item number eighteen is where our citizens can make final comments before we adjourn. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment?
Yeah.
Please come forward.
That here recently, there was a significant impact from the weather, that a lot of people in our community experience problems with their water. As a matter of fact, I'm here because I have a six hundred and sixty dollars water bill. All because somehow or another, where I would not know anything, that the water was broken underground. If you all want to take a look, I did brought pictures. The water line was broken under the ground, which meant the water never reached the house. You understand? So they want me to pay six hundred dollars when I am accustomed to paying twenty-eight dollars, twenty-seven dollars, twenty-six dollars for water bill. And so I brought a few water bills with me as well to demonstrate what my water bill usually is. And I'm not the only person that is here in reference to that. I have a few other people in the audience who are, who have, who had issues with their water. And I know the people in New York had major problems, you know, and that cold hit us too. So I want to understand because that water had, you know, I didn't find out until later. But my foot, you can see where my footprint went down in the ground, not knowing what was going on until I got this bill from water, and that's when I went over there to check. You know, to see what was going on, I got this letter from, from the water department about a possible leak in the area. Well, my sister had problems too, so I didn't know who was the problem. You understand? Cause I couldn't see nothing, I didn't know nothing. But it wasn't until a few days later that here it is. I got a letter from them, I said, wow, let me go check again, and water is going to ground at this point. You see? And so that water never came through my house. And I'm trying to figure out, why is it that you guys are writing policies that require us to only get assistance from one bill when, when we haven't even used the water that's still in the ground?
Thank you.
One more question.
Any other comments? All public comment is for three minutes at a time. On the agenda, it's well-known. Any other comments? Seeing no further action? Okay. Yes. Okay, seeing no- Okay, seeing no further action, this meeting is adjourned.